They need 12,000.
That's just, no.
It's supposed to be.
It's gonna be at its supply.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is.
They're not gonna have animals running around.
But the other thing is, and I, well, it's probably just on the wall between closed office and dollar store. But the access there is, this is the access. They've got way off track. And I don't know if anyone said anything about that.
They have that opening on the highway.
Yeah, well, they need access.
Okay. We're gonna call to order the April 7th, 2015 work-study session of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a roll call, please.
Good afternoon again. So Commissioner Pasiak.
Here.
Commissioner Sloan.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Merritt.
Here.
Commissioner Roach.
Here.
Thank you.
Discussion item 3A, continued discussion of proposed amendments to Chapter 4.21, sign regulations.
So, here we are with everything on the table. I'd like to thank Elise. She is the one that took all of that verbiage and pounded it into boxes. And it wasn't easy. It took her quite a while to sort through all of the information, try and include what's relevant, and highlight some of the differences. So, starting with the ag and residential districts, you can see right out of the gate, we were missing three residential zoning classifications. So, we've added those back in. In terms of the dimensions, you're gonna notice that some of these don't make any sense. There's no other way to say it. For instance, you don't have a residential use in an open space district. And, so, going through this will be striking out all of the open spaces. And I have corrections on another page that you'll be, will be seeing. One of the other things that we're going to do, once we get this, now that we've got this in table form, we can start going back and working on getting some better definitions of what some of these signs are. Because there are a lot of them that there's no definition whatsoever. And then, when we talk about some of the maximum dimensions and heights, when you talk about sign height, the height is calculated from the top of the sign. And some of these, I'm assuming they meant the actual area of the sign because they have a maximum sign height of three feet. So, that's not really going to do anybody a whole lot of good to have a sign that's only three feet off the ground, the top of the sign. So, there are things like that in there you'll see corrections for that we're gonna go through and, and talk about. Once we've reviewed this tonight, we'll be ready to go forward with the work group or the, what did we decide we're gonna call it? Of course, we're drawing blanks now. With the, the work group that's, of business owners that we're going to get together to be able to go through this and get some feedback from them. I wanted to have it in a simple-to-read form before I put them through all of that. So, for example, under non-residential uses, talking such as, but not limited to churches, schools, group homes, farms, not intended for home occupations, a lot of that language can just plain go away. It's not necessary. So, you can see here, I went through and struck some of the, the language and have some suggested changes here already. To call it "single-family residence" because what you're really talking about is a residential identification sign, you know? Roach has lived here, you know, Charlie Merritt's house. So, that's the kind of thing that they're talking about in, rather than a residential sign. Again, with the multi-family residences, we don't need to define what they are. We already know what a multi-family residence is. So, that language can come out. They're not allowed in all of those zoning districts except multi-family residential and mobile home parks are the only place that you would be using one of these kinds of signs. So, those can all be struck. Again, with the, the non-residential uses, rather than list them all, just schools, churches, and civic organizations, we'll cover just about all of them. And again, we won't be seeing any of those in open space because open space is open For freestanding monument signs, again, we had to add in some of these zoning districts that we're missing. They're just, it's, the way it's worded and the way it's written is really confusing. And it was hard to put this into a table because it's so confusing in trying to figure out exactly what they were talking about and what they were, what they meant. Again, with a freestanding monument sign with a maximum height of six feet, what you're really talking about in a freestanding sign is a sign that's not attached to anything else as opposed to just a monument sign. When we went through that whole slideshow of all of the different kinds of signs, a monument sign is set on the ground where a pole sign can be set on poles. But it, this section of freestanding monument signs doesn't talk about pole signs at all. And we have quite a few of them throughout town. So, it's something that we're gonna have to work on here is redoing that as well. So, again, going through and just cleaning up just the language without changing anything, we've greatly reduced just the number of words involved. There are just way too many words. For instance, for the multiple residences sign, the freestanding monument sign, all you need to say is a maximum of two freestanding monument signs may be permitted. We don't need to say where they should be located. That's up to the developer to decide where they go, what may or may not be on them, or that the colors, the material used for the background has to be in contrast to the numbers. It doesn't do anybody any good to put up a sign where you can't read the numbers.
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
When you say they can have two and the max would be 32 square feet, is that each sign can be 32?
Well.
Or it's a total, or maybe we need to clarify that?
That's one of the things we need to clarify because it's not clear whether it was one sign with an aggregate of 32 square feet, two signs, it doesn't specify whether you can have a two-sided sign, do both sides count? So, again, this is just kind of some of the, the issues that we have with this section of the code. Whoops. Again, non-residential uses, just talking about schools, churches, and civic organizations is certainly adequate. One freestanding monument sign per lot permitted, the end. They can put the logo on, they can leave the logo off. We don't need to be talking about what they may or may not put on the sign because at this point, it's, it's not relevant. There, there are so many laws that already govern what go on, what certain signs can have and can't have. To include, you know, the name or logo of the facility, organization, or development, and shall include the street address, the whole point, again, of the sign is to make the location visible and findable by the general public. This was the directional signs section. Again, this is something else we ran into is as we progressed through the sign code, it was kind of evident what signs were added later on because they were not included in calculating the total aggregate area of signage allowed on a particular lot. And generally, if you have a sign, it's included in the calculation. So, needless to say, that's all gone. Again, we struck out directional signs shall not be included and just left it, it may include a maximum of 25% of the sign area devoted to the display of a business logo or identification. Even that, to me, is unnecessary. If somebody wants to put a sign out that's just your logo, that's fine. It's your sign, and if people can't find it, well, then you need a better sign. Again, we removed the same language for the schools, churches, and civic organizations. Directory signs, again, these are the signs that list all of the different businesses in a building or businesses in an office park. Again, we were missing a number of zoning districts. It's not exactly clear about, again, they don't differentiate between aggregate all the time in per sign. So, we cleaned this one up. You would not need a directory sign in a single-family residential neighborhood. So, it's staff's recommendation to just strike that in its entirety. For the multi-family residential uses, you would see something like this. Excuse me. And to have one wall sign per individual unit, meaning structure, but not one wall sign per dwelling unit because this is a list of all of the people who live in that You wouldn't see them as a freestanding monument sign either. You would see these as a, generally as a wall sign. And then, for the schools, churches, and so forth, we left the language pretty much the same. So, for the reader panel signs, these are, these are a point of contention in a lot of communities. Some people like them, some people hate them. Electronic message boards, whatever you want to call them, they, some people, some municipalities allow scrolling scripts, some you can only have it fixed. So, we tried to not get into this into a whole lot of detail because I think that's something we're gonna be sorting out in the work group first. We left just one group, schools, churches, and organizations, civic organizations, because right now, it's only elementary and secondary schools and churches that can have these. And then, like I said, we didn't do a whole lot with the language because this is something we're gonna have to take a good, hard look with, at, because these kinds of animated electronic signs are becoming a lot more popular. You see a lot of them down in Phoenix, the billboards that change message. So, it's something that we really need to take our time in reviewing. Non-agricultural and residential, or as most people would call it, commercial and industrial. Again, with the wall signs, they, this, we start here. Oh, where to start? Non-agricultural signs, so we, this is the description here on the left where they talk about what kind of signs they are, how many businesses, any addition, any complex of three or more businesses shall be required to submit a comprehensive sign package to go through commission and approved by council. That's way too much. There's no need for anybody that, at three buildings or three tenants or more should have to go through that. That's something that can easily be approved administratively. And when we get into large residential developments or large commercial developments, shopping centers, and things like that, we will be introducing a comprehensive sign package so that people can do all of their signage for that at once. And we can look at the signage altogether as opposed to coming back every time you have three or more. If you have a building and you remove a demising wall where you had three tenants and now you have two, and then maybe you split that space into three spaces, do you have to now come back with a new sign package to get approved because you have more than the three you originally had? It just seems a little onerous. One of the first things I noticed, and I've noticed this driving around town, is the amount of signage allowed for commercial buildings, and it's generally gauged by the number of linear feet on the street, the front, the street-facing side of a building. In Chino Valley, we only allow one square foot. Two square feet is much more common, especially when you're talking about a state trunk line at 45 miles an hour as a suggested speed. It's hard to see the smaller signs. So, that would be my first suggestion is to up that, that signage from one square foot to two. And then, to talk about one square foot for each linear foot of the building side upon which the sign will be placed so that if you have a building on a corner, you can have signage on the front and signage on the side.
I have a question.
Sure.
You've struck out the aggregate area of 200 square feet. How are we going to limit the amount of wall signage?
For a specific building or for a shopping center?
For the wall signs. It used to say 200 square foot total.
Right.
And now, you're saying two square feet for each linear feet of building frontage and one for each side.
Mm-hmm.
So, what if you had a building that was 300 feet by 200 feet?
Then you'd have an awful lot of signage because of the scale of the building.
Okay. And that, that's my question. Are we going to leave it with the scale of the building or are we going to sometimes say, there's only so much signage you can have up there?
We will leave it like this because the signage should be proportionate to the building.
Okay. Okay.
For freestanding monument signage, again, this really should be just freestanding signage because a monument sign is a type of freestanding sign, and we need to talk about those separately. Again, we get to the maximum dimensions of 32 square feet. It doesn't specify whether it's one side or two sides, a maximum height of eight feet. Again, it just needs a lot of work and cleaning up. So, again, we went through and struck some of the references to open space. We talked about the address again. We don't need to mandate that people put numbers on. The fire department already says you have to do that, so it's not productive to repeat it here. And then, talked a bit about, started to talk a bit about the multiple building developments, shopping, or commercial centers where you would have buildings just the size that Commissioner Pasiak was talking about. Those signs for a freestanding sign, you can have, for instance, one at the entrance, think of Old Home Manor. If that were to develop as an industrial park, you would have one freestanding monument sign there at the entrance on Tree Farm Road and then one further down. So, that's what we're talking about here, and we'll get into the individual signs later The directional signs, again, and directory signs. The directional signs don't talk about being onsite or offsite, so we fix that. And the directory signs, again, were not, it was not clear. So, what we said about directory signs was to allow them where they're needed to direct people around. Really, these should be referred to, especially in a, when we get into the subdivision part, wayfinding signs because they're gonna direct you to a specific building or a specific area of a site for a specific purpose. So, the, that's, we struck some of the language, again, about not including these signs in the, calculating the total aggregate area for signage allowed on a parcel. There's no reason why you can't, why these should not be included, especially once we get rid of the aggregate limit. And then, we talked about added language clarifying a retail, commercial, and industrial development of three or more structures under unified ownership so that we're using these in bigger commercial and industrial settings rather than, you know, if Virgeline's Merritt Center there, she's got, how many tenants do you have?
Six.
Right. So, with six tenants, she could get one of these signs, a directory sign that would be out at front. Here's this one, here's that one, here's this one, here's that one. They're far more useful in, like I said, in a larger setting. In a shopping mall, you'll see them, Sears, Pennies, those kinds of things. The directional sign, or directory signs are about, are the same. Those are the ones you see that will direct you to a specific site. I'm sorry. Those are the ones that will have a list of the tenants as opposed to directing you to the site. Drive-through restaurant boards. We took out some of the, we suggest striking some of this language because they should be included in calculating the total aggregate area. Corrected monument base instead of monument vase. And they can be freestanding or wall-mounted, it doesn't matter, we don't need to include the words. We talked, we also looked at these portion that regulated window signs, awning signs, projecting signs, all of those. So, in terms of awning signs, it allows you to use logos, but again, but not in such a way where it is a predominant element of the awning sign. Well, that's the purpose of the sign is to put your logo out there so people can find you. So, to not allow that on an awning sign seems kind of counterproductive. Window signs, you're not allowed to exceed 25% of the window area. I am not sure that we want to start, that we should continue to regulate window signs. Shingle signs and projecting signs, again, you'll see these, they hang down from the bottom of the roof so that people can walk down and see the sign hanging out there, or they stick out from the side of the building. We don't have very many of those here. Again, the shingle signs, we don't have to put in there that it's designed and oriented primarily for the aid of pedestrians. It should not include any advertising, additional advertising copy. They're really not big enough to be able to contain anything else other than the business name and a logo to be legible at eight feet and three square feet maximum size. Same with the projecting signs, you don't see a whole lot of these anymore. Again, just redundant language. And a wall or parapet sign is not permitted if a projecting sign is used to identify the business. Parapet signs are the ones that go on the, on the parapet wall. You see a lot of those out west here because most of the buildings do have some sort of old western-looking parapet. Again, for whatever reason, we have to control the amount of use of logos, which really is pointless. And 25% of the front face of the area of the parapet wall is really not very big, so I'd suggest upping it to 50%. These are all the total signage standards, which pretty much repeat everything that I already said. So, we struck a lot of them and got it down to, I believe, three. Signage placed on building side shall not exceed one-half times the allowed amount for that building frontage. For buildings on corner lots, if the area for signage allowed for the building front is placed on the second-side street, then the area for signage allowed for the second side may be placed on the front of the building. In other words, if you have a building on a corner and the side of the building gets more traffic than the front of the building, you can take the signage that you would be allowed on the front of the building and put it on the side, and the signage that you would get on the side of the building and put it on the front. But you still can't exceed those two ratios of signage. And then, again, this is where we introduce the planned area development in a comprehensive sign package after review by the commission and approval of council as part of a final development plan approval. So, when that whole planned area development plan moves through the approval process, at the end, the signage will be approved as part of that final plan.
Could you go back to the first one, please?
This one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah. All right. That's, the numbering was off, that's all.
Oh, okay.
That should be a three.
One, two.
Three, four.
Oh, you're right, it should be. Thank you. Okay. So, now we get into temporary signage. Again, some of these can be lumped together, the grand opening banners, pennants and displays, special events. There are better ways of describing these uses. In the zoning districts, we have CL, CH, industrial, public, or institutional property. We don't define what institutional property is anywhere, ever. And then, there are no dimensions really about the banners.
Four feet by 12 feet long.
That's what we've been doing, but it's not, it's not in here. Whoa, whoa, temporary signs. These are the dimensions for the A-frame signs, which are included. So, again, it's way too wordy. Grand opening signs are allowed onsite only for a period of 30 days and only in conjunction with the issuance of a new business permit. So that when somebody opens a business, they have their grand opening sign, ta-da, that's it. If their business, they move their business, somebody else comes in, they too can have a grand opening sign for 30 days when they get a new building permit. I'm sorry, business permit. As opposed, I should say, business license, actually. As opposed to having to come in and fill out a, a whole sign plan. We define banners as made of cloth, nylon, or similar material. The special events banners, pennants, and displays for 48 square feet is, is a lot better than not specified. And then, the A-frame signs, rather than giving two specific sets of dimensions for these signs, they're pretty much standardized anyhow, but not to exceed 10 square feet in aggregate. Both sides must contain a logo and/or advertising copy so you don't have somebody with an A-frame sign, 10 feet on one side, and nothing on the back. So, it's five feet, five feet.
One question back on the grand opening.
Uh-huh.
Would this not be the more appropriate time to get a maximum dimension?
Um, that's something that we're gonna talk about with the, the work group.
Okay.
So, we'll be bringing, these are just initial, this is the initial strike through.
Thank you.
So.
Does A.D.O. have a site and ordinance also?
Yeah, you can't put anything, you're not supposed to put anything in the A.D.O. right-of-way. They can come and take it. They do occasionally.
Okay.
Let's see. So, off-site directional signs, again, we refer to institutional property, which we don't define. And then, we talk a bit about political signs. This language, we just completely redid with the, an ordinance two years ago. So, I'm not too concerned about political signs. The directional signs, and this, again, is for a temporary, for a special permit, they can be placed 24 hours in advance of the event, removed within 24 hours of the conclusion of the event, and approval shall be obtained from the owner of the property on which the off-site directional signs will be placed. That's all we need. Now, real estate signs, this whole portion of it about the real estate signs and so forth, really, the whole thing needs, like everything else, to be completely redone. So, we, right now, it does differentiate between five acres or, or less than five acres or five acres or more. One non-illuminated sign located on the subject property. The real estate directional signs are the ones that are gonna be tricky trying to define how many you can have. Because sometimes, if you've got something out in the middle of Chino Meadows that you're trying to give somebody directions to, limiting them to four signs is not gonna be adequate. Or to get them into, to some of the homes in Highlands Ranch where you're making more than four turns from 89 to get back in there. So, rather than tie it to a limited number, just one directional sign per turning movement. So, if you have to turn five times to get to an open house, well, then you can have it turn here, turn here, turn here, turn here. And again, we left the language in about posted only when a salesperson is on duty. Construction and development signs, this language is not clear at all about what we're calling it because a construction or development, they're different things. So, I split them into. Construction signs in any zoning district talks about where you can put a sign, this is under construction, you know, Safeway under construction, something like that, coming soon. Or it's something that you can put up for a new residential neighborhood. Bright Star still has theirs up. Bright Star, you know, homes of the future. So, those are the construction signs in any zoning district, they would be allowed. And they can be up there until 80% of the residential lots are sold. At that point, there really isn't a whole lot of reason to leave At that point, there really isn't a whole lot of reason to leave them up. And then integrated or mixed-use or planned area development signage, again, any zoning district, and tying it to the actual acreage of the development, rather than anything else, because the larger the site, the more signage a developer is going to want and need. Temporary signage standards, there weren't any, so we made new ones. Oh, there were some, I'm sorry, we did amend some of these. Subdivision signs, again, the language here, like in the actual subdivision in the PAD ordinance, tends to describe more residential than commercial and industrial, and you can certainly have a commercial or industrial subdivision. So when we talk about these, we need to either differentiate between which subdivision we're talking about, or have them, have them be relevant to every single one zoning district that they could be in, the residential, commercial, or industrial. So here we talk about subdivision entry and identification signs, 24 square foot per subdivision, or parcel, or unit permitted. So that doesn't really tell you anything at all, because 24, is it 24 square feet per, if it's a subdivision and you have six units, does that mean you now get about 150 square feet? Because it talks about one sign per unit, well, so these are some of the language problems that we have. The onsite signs, this was another one that got a little crazy in the details about singular double face with box edges, not within 100 feet of any property of an existing residence, must be removed when 85% of the lots within the subdivision are sold and the onsite sales office closes. So we took some of that language out, and we struck the language at the end of this, simply because we will be including it in another, a new section, where we talk about a comprehensive sign package tied to a planned area development district. And we have more onsite signs, and kiosk signs. That one, I really pared back, I guess is the best way to say it. I think that what they're trying to talk about here are wayfinding signs, so that when you come into a planned community, and there's a sign that says clubhouse, and pool, and tennis courts, but really, the way it was written, it just, it doesn't really, you can't tell. The language about, "Any sign panel approved for a particular development project within the town shall not be changed to another project without prior approval." So I don't, I don't, I'm not clear on what a temporary residential kiosk sign is, and so I think we need to better define that and talk about what it actually is. And this is some more about the kiosk signs. That went on for quite a while. So then, of course, we have to go back and redefine flags. It should be included with the banners and the pennants. And talk about where they can be. This is strictly for the subdivisions. No more than six flags may be placed at any one subdivision. Flags shall contain no lettering. I think this is one that we need to look at and talk about what exactly it is we want to regulate here. And again, with the PAD directional signs, we struck that because really, the, PAD is not going to be different, that much different than any other subdivision development, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, in terms of signage. The same rules should apply. It's just that for a PAD, if you do a comprehensive sign package, then you can change how the signage appears on the site and on the buildings. A lot of times, developers, for instance, at Prescott Crossroads, Sam's Club has a rule where they have to have X number of signage on a freestanding monument sign on the, at the main entrance. They have to have their sign so big, it has to be bigger than everybody else's, and you can run into problems with that, with that, when you have other people come in and they want their sign to be bigger than anyone else's. So in doing the PADs, that's something that we would do a package on upfront, rather than doing individual signs. You can come back and amend the PAD signage, but to include it as a separate district really is not, or a separate classification of signs is not necessary. So that's about what we've cut out so far. That's probably a good three pages of text. So we've cut quite a bit out, it's what we end up adding back in that we'll be talking about in the future, in terms of new regulations, different signage sizes, other things that are issues with the business community that we're not hearing about, that we need to fix. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Flags, are we good? Are we splitting the, between the American flag and a commercial flag?
Yes, we can, that's something that we will be defining, is that there are no limit on the number of American flags you can fly, state flags, those sorts of flags. Those are fine. It's just the flags you see, Birdie's got one haircut here, that kind of thing.
So this, this is just the very preliminary steps forward?
Exactly. Yes.
And then this, after tonight, it goes to the stakeholders committee, for lack of a better word?
Right. We'll start, I think that is what we called it.
Okay, so then, and those folks will beat it up a little bit, and then they'll come back with some other wordage and...
That's, that's the intent, is to have them take a look at it, tell us what's working, what's not working, what they'd like to see. And of course, we're going to have to temper that a little bit, because business people like signs.
Only their signs.
And lots of them. So we need to strike some sort of balance between what's going to be adequate and help them stay in business versus what's going to be clutter or distracting to drivers.
We're not going to get involved with actual construction signage, as far as trench open, anything like that?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Those are strictly a contractor...
Correct, yes. No, I'm not regulating, no.
So as far as construction or development sign?
Yeah, and again, that's why I don't like the, some of the names of these signs, because construction sign to me is, you know, open ditch, or something like that, as opposed to, you know, we're building pet club here. So I think that's, to change it to a project sign, I think, or a project identification sign is a better idea, rather than calling it a construction sign. Because that can fit a lot more things. I did want to, yeah, go ahead.
Say again, you were going to strike open space in what?
All of them. Open space is supposed to be parkland and trails and things like that. So really, it's property that's for everybody's use, so you're not going to have, there's not going to be construction, you're not going to have a construction sign. The only thing that we may leave on there are like wayfinding or directional signs, in case, you know, you have a trail with, you know, trail numbers on it, something like that, that we can leave in. But other than that, you can't build a residential home in an open space, you can't build a business there, so...
But aren't some of the subdivisions, the parks they create within the subdivision, declared as open space?
If there's, we're talking about being zoned open space, as opposed to being declared open space.
Okay.
So being, you could have them, a park within a subdivision, and in fact, I don't think any open space in Bright Star is zoned open space. All of Bright Star is zoned, mobile home park, multifamily residential.
Okay. So would there then be something for the park sign?
Yes, right.
That's within the residential?
Right, and then that goes to the way...
Undeclared open space.
Right, undeclared open space. It would be, it would be like the wayfinding signs, when we talked about the kiosk signs, something like that would be where you, the kind of signage you would have for that. I did want to go back to Commissioner Paziac's question about maximum signage, because it is a good question, and this, again, goes back to why we need to revisit this. When we're talking about some of these, limiting the number of signs, a lot, most of these will have a maximum dimension. So for instance, for an onsite sign for, what is this, subdivision, during the construction phase, one less sign, blah, blah, the maximum you can have is 96 square feet. Now, you could have 96 one-square-foot signs if you wanted, but it's probably not going to be very effective. So by limiting the square footage, you, by default, limit the number that you can have. A lot of times, they will regulate the dimensions, like with the, with the A-frame signs, so that you, the amount is limited, rather than just as many as you possibly could fit in there. So it is, there, it is, in effect, a limit. Any other questions? Alrighty.
It's a lot of information, and we look forward to whatever you're going to bring back to us.
It is a lot.
Just not so much.
Maybe in smaller pieces, if it comes back. It's a lot of information.
It is a lot of information, and I did want to go through it all together, so that you get some idea of why it takes so long to do this.
That makes sense.
To try to, to get paragraphs down to four squares on a page, in, you know, categories that talk about zoning districts allowed, and maximum dimensions, and what the purpose is, and to get it down to some really easily distinguishable standards, so that this is easier to use, is not easy. So that's why it's taking us a lot more time than I had initially hoped it would. But now that we've got it to this point, where we can at least look at the regulations, we can do something about that, and then go back and work on some of the other language that's still floating out there.
Are you posting the corrected, or the lined out?
Uh-huh, the strikeout, uh-huh.
Strikeouts. Is that posted somewhere?
I can send it to you.
Or can we get a copy of?
Sure.
Because this still has it in the original form.
Yeah, no, I can send the, yes, if you want the strikeouts, if you're interested in the strikeouts, I'll just send it out to everybody, and you can take a look at it.
Okay. That would be great.
That way, you can see what we're talking about changing. So in the process of this, I have had the pleasure of meeting Virgeline and talking about signs at length, and I know she has some opinions that she would like to share.
Well, when they have the last, state your name.
Oh, you got to come up here and state your name.
My name, my name is Virgeline Hall. I am the property manager for Merritt Plaza, M-A-R-R-E-T-T, 1174 and 1170-64, South Highway 89. Because of my position, I have to ride herd on the tenants that come in and out of the complex. Their main concern is that they be allowed to have banners on the fence. Sometimes they have questions about the A-frames. We need it clarified where the A-frames can go. There is no such verbiage from ADOT as to where, so every time, it becomes a knock-down, drag-out with a tenant. Because I say, this is what I was told, and they say, show me in writing. A-frames, the last time that there was discussion on this, we were told, and it was put down in writing, two and a half feet by two and a half feet. I'm seeing that it's now different.
It's 24 by 36 inches, or 31 by 40.
But the last time this was discussed, it was 24 by, two and a half feet by two and a half feet.
It's probably been amended since then.
We have a tenant currently that is afraid that they're going to make us make our pole sign smaller. Another, I lost the word. Everybody else has had a parapet sign. The one tenant was told, no, you have to have a shingle sign. That was clarified, and she got to have the parapet sign. So this is what I'm seeing. I'm sure that other business complexes in the town are also seeing the same problems I'm dealing with. And I'm very unhappy that not more people have shown up. They complain, but they apathy. And Ms. Florence knows, because we've discussed this many times.
Excuse me, what, where exactly are you talking about? The address doesn't mean anything to me, where?
We're the fifth driveway south of the Mabry Gas Station.
They're kind of by the Arizona gun, the safe place.
By the gun safe place.
The Arizona safe keeper is right out in front. But the other...
I wasn't familiar with that, okay.
1164B is behind, 1164A, which is the Arizona safe keeper. The other buildings at 1174 South Highway 89 are set quite a way back off the highway, so we're like in a little hole, and they don't want to be left out. It's a wonderful complex. I've been there over 15 years now. And they just, they want to be seen, they want to make a living, they don't want to be on welfare.
Give them credit.
Pardon?
Nothing.
Anything else?
Thank you very much for coming out. Any other comments for staff?
It sounds like what you're doing is necessary, because there's, seems like a lot of ambiguity and no consistency.
It's, again, it's something that is long overdue. This, trying to make sense of this in its current format is difficult at best. So I'm looking forward to getting this done as quickly as possible. It's complicated enough without having to make it more complicated with redundancy and the things we already know and don't need to be reminded of, and telling people you can only have 25% of your sign, have a logo on it. So those are the kinds of things that we need to deal with.
Is there opportunity for creativity within this? And when I think of it, the sign, the safe place, you know, that really stands out, that's quite creative, that safety that he has up there. I know a recent sandwich place opened up, that their sign is on a covered wagon.
Right.
Are we going to create something that allows for that creativity?
Yes, yes. One of the things that we will be talking about for the area along 89, if you recall, in the general plan, we had cores. The general plan talked about cores, about entertainment cores and so forth. So we're, I think what we're going to end up doing is to do an overlay for the cores in that 89 area, to give them a little bit different set of rules for signage. So we can use some of those more creative ideas. The safe, everybody knows where the safe is. The covered wagon sign is great, that's a, that's a great sign. Birdie has one on top of the remnants of a covered wagon, but I think hers was a real covered wagon. And that's something that I'd like to see us keep as much as possible, because it's different. So those kinds of figural signs, we'll figure out a way to measure probably just the, measure just the sign area where there's actual text for the name of the business and the address, as opposed to the entire safe, or whatever. It's going to take some, I'm going to have to think about how to do it, so that we don't end up with somebody that's got a 20-foot by 20-foot safe sitting out in front of their so that we don't end up with somebody that's got a 20-foot by 20-foot safe sitting out in front of their dog grooming business. But we'll be, we'll address those. And things like inflatables, people, you know, have the blow-up docks, and the guys with the noodle hair at the car dealerships, and those sorts of things. So this is just the start, so. If you have any?
I noticed in, in Chino, nobody is using those balloon-type things like Honda
Right, right.
has in Prescott, and are we going to allow that, or? Is the reason we don't have them, because we don't allow them?
I don't know that anybody's ever tried to use one, at least not in the last year and a half. We will have some sort of regulation on how large and how often they can be used. It's not uncommon to regulate that, because they are kind of a distraction. They can't, generally, they are not used as permanent signage, for temporary events and things like that.
I think at one time, one of the Safeway neighbors there had something going like that, didn't they?
Oh, the check place.
Yeah.
Yeah, was it check cashing or something, or advance, check advance, or whatever? And they had the little guy in the corner, yeah.
Well, were they told they couldn't do that, or?
They just stopped doing it, so.
Probably wasn't paying off.
Right, it probably didn't work. Oh, right.
Oh, yeah?
Yep, there was a statue of liberty, too. Anything else?
I'm good.
All right, hearing that, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.